The Trotwood Madison Regular Meeting Thursday, September 20, 2018. To order. The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. Mrs. Allen? Will you call the roll?
Yes. Michael Andrews?
Here.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Denise Moore?
Yes.
Well now, um, oh. We'll now have an opportunity to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
They're properly moved to second. Any changes or additions?
But we'll move please. Is that Norman?
Mr. Scares?
Okay, and, um, this is Jeter Freeman?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so...
Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. Uh, Mi- Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes. The agenda is adopted. Do we have any community comments this evening? Ms. Allen? Yes, we do.
Okay, where's the young man that wanted to speak?
Oh, he's still back there.
I believe he's right here in the red shirt.
Yeah.
Please, yeah, please come forward. Do you have your form? Do you have your form?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
My name is Cameron White and I'm eighteen years old and, um, I'm an entrepreneur and I was just, and I have a clothing business, like Face Up, meaning Face Your Fears, and it inspired me to do what inspired me to create this was because there's a lot of things going on in the world, like kids getting bullied, you got, um, domestic violence, rape, people scared to, um, get help for being depressed and all this other stuff going on in the world, school shooting, um, police brutality, and I just wanted to put some positive in the universe to tell everybody that you don't have to be afraid to do anything or to speak up or to just live your life because you deserve to do whatever you want to do. And I was coming on behalf to ask, um, the board to see if the staff was willing to buy some of my shirts to just let the kids know that it's a safe area at school where you don't have to be afraid to do anything in life.
Thank you.
Cam. Please bear with us this evening. We are on our new system, Board Docs, so, and we're in our, in a different venue this evening, so just bear with us. And of course, there will be follow-up, um, Mr. Overston. I know that we didn't have, uh, the paperwork filled out or anything, but we'll make sure
that you get the paperwork before you comment. Thank you. Next up, uh, presentation. We have a gifted services presentation presented by Kiara Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the board and to the community, um, tonight I just wanted to, um, be available to answer questions and to justify my reasonings for submitting a revision to our gifted policy for the district. So I just, um, wanted to start with, uh, some historical information as to what prompted, um, these major revisions to our policy. Last year, the state's operating standards for gifted did change, and so all of the districts in the state were, uh, commissioned to relook, uh, or look over their, uh, policies to see what additions or revisions needed to be made to make sure they align with the new operating standards. When we submitted our first draft of that revision, um, it was basically just the bare minimum of what the state was saying that we needed, and, uh, before, um, Mr. Bell left us, he gave us, um, information that he had gotten feedback that it, that we needed more details, so I began to further work on it, and, uh, Ms. Minor also advised me to, um, consider, uh, adding equitable equity language in there. We were learning more about ESSA and what that looks like in operation in schools, and we were doing some work with Learn to Earn and Equity, and so when I put that lens on our, uh, policy, uh, that's when the gaps began to emerge as far as what policies and procedures and practices we had in place for our gifted identification services that could be more equitable and inclusive of all students. So the changes that you see in the policy are directly related to ensuring that we have a strong system, policy and practice, um, or a strong policy that supports the implementation of practices that would be more equitable for all students. Uh, and what I mean by that is, uh, a lot of times in some districts, screening and identification practices don't always, uh, do their best to best capture all populations of students. They do well with capturing of students who are compliant, they have good behavior, they're doing well in all academic areas, and excelling even, but we have students, uh, in multiple districts, not just here, that, uh, oftentimes underachieve even though they are gifted, and a lot of times people don't understand how that can be, but that's very possible. We also have students who, um, that can be twice exceptional, and what that means is that they could be identified gifted in one area but also have a disability, whether it be an academic disability or other health impaired disability. And, uh, it's not that our policy was excluding those students, but we didn't have things in place to fully include those students to make sure we were ensuring their success. So the majority of the revisions that you see are things that I, uh, felt was needed in order to make sure that whoever is in this role, uh, years down the road, that we don't ever have to come back to this, that it will, but, um, whatever our program it looks like, it will stand on, on this, making sure that all students are served according to their needs. And that's really all I have. I, uh, provided a one cheater, um, of information, um, and it's just in case, uh, you wanted to know, just some trend data on how our gifted has been doing over the last couple of years. Uh, we've been trending up, but we have not yet met the state indicator, and, uh, but we are, we have a lot of things in place and a lot of major adjustments that we've made over the years, so that's about all I have. Was the board has specific questions?
You have a question?
I, I don't have a question, just a, um, statement. I did want to, uh, make sure I did clarify. I know the last time, Ms., um, Williams, uh, attempted to give the presentation, that I had some hesitation because it was not in Board Docs. It actually is in Board Policy in the actual physical handbook, um, it was just not in our electronic version, um, so I just wanted to make sure that I did publicly, that we weren't scrutinizing or anything like that, it just wasn't there in electronic form, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Next up, uh, under Board Items, we have, uh, recommended action for a resolution to approve policy changes, uh, zero one one three, the address. Okay? We, we really need to make sure our address is correct for the Board Office. Uh, also, the members' powers, zero one four seven, compensation, and four one two zero point oh nine, volunteers, and that's classified staff, as well as four one two oh point nine, volunteers, professional staff. And I am going to pass this on to the Policy Committee to share some information.
Did you have anything to say, could you?
Um, thank you again, Madam Chair. So just a few of the policies that was, that were, um, included in the, uh, review that was submitted at the workshop, excuse me, the work session, these are just five of those, and we say five, these particular five because they were simple in nature, um, again, like changing the address, um, and then the member powers, um, and then compensation for the board in terms of training. Uh, I do want to make sure that we are, um, clear in regards to what that language is and just as an opportunity to provide, uh, transparency. Uh, we just want to make sure, and I'll read it here verbatim, additionally, members may receive compensation for attendance at training programs. Uh, our old policy said at a maximum of sixty dollars a day. Uh, we lifted this language directly from O R C, which says to provide such compensation shall not exceed sixty dollars a day for attendance at a training program, three hours or fewer in length, and one hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for attendance at training, um, training programs longer than three hours in length. So that's the language that we are adding to that particular policy, and O R C does mandate that there is a resolution attached to that, so again, for the sake of transparency, I would like to read that resolution, and it, it reads, whereas the Trotwood Madison City Schools Board of Education recognizes that participation in training and professional development is crucial to the perpetuation of effective board governance and competency. Whereas the Trotwood Madison City Schools Board of Education recognizes its obligation to stay compliant with the law's outline and the Ohio Revised Code, be a result that the members of the Trotwood Madison City Schools Board of Education may receive compensation for attendance at training programs that such compensation shall not exceed sixty dollars a day for attendance at a training program, three hours or fewer in length, and one hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for attendance at training programs longer than three hours in length. Uh, the last two, which again are, uh, which speaks to the volun- volunteers of the district, um, one, the classified staff and professional staff, we're just, um, removing the word felony, um, and we are making sure that we are in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio, Ohio Department of Education, um, and the new wording there will say accept felonies that are strictly prohibited by the Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Department of Education. And again, we're ru- removing the word felony there because there are some felonies where, um, people can still work or volunteer in the district, and we don't want to, we want to make sure we don't exclude anybody when O D E and, um, O R C says that they actually can't participate, can't work, can't volunteer. Uh, so those are the only ones of, for, uh, action this evening.
I need a motion to accept item B one as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
They're properly moved to second. Any other questions? Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. The roll is second. You said it.
I second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa, the Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
Next up are Treasurers' Items.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, just, yeah, we're in the first step. Okay. Okay. Work session on August 2nd, 2018, regular meeting on August 16th, 2018, special meeting retreat on August 17th through the 18th, 2018, and special meeting on August 30th, 2018. Okay, and action is requested. I need a motion to accept Treasurer's Item, uh, Treasurer T one for the board minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved to second. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Denise Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
The first one is cash reconciliation for the month of August. You can see PNC general account is one point four million dollars, one million four hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. The total investment balances is thirty-four million, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, five hundred and tw- twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, we had some outstanding vendor checks in the amount of seven hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. With that adjustment, brings it down to thirty-five million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. That does match exactly to our financial system, and so the variance bank to book is exactly The next is the annual spending plan, uh, for the month of August. You can see the revenues are at the top, and the expenditures are indicated. This particular spreadsheet, um, indicates your monthly actual and also your fiscal year-to-date actuals, so for revenue and expenditures, and all the way down at the bottom, you see your beginning cash balance and then the ending cash balances through August, and then the amount of outstanding purchase orders or incomings that we had. The next, um, spreadsheet is checks over a thousand dollars for the month of August. At our financial meeting this evening, there were some questions, and I'll go over those questions, um, at this point. First question was, and I answered these, and I think anyone can add any more to, to my answers. The first one was a check in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. It was to Four H Camp Grand. I happen to know that that was the amount of money that we paid to send our band to camp this past summer. The next one was in the amount of five thousand, four hundred dollars to Bonn May's Catering. That bill was paid for our breakfast that we had on the first day of school, of, for, at our convocation. The next one was four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That was cut to Mobymax, and as I remember maybe telling you, you know, Mobymax, um, I thought that was related to special education, um, especially at campus class.
It's an academic program.
And then on the, um, there are a couple of checks that were cut to Wolloman and Cotton. One was in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents, and there was also another check cut for one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents. I had told my finance committee that I would go back and double-check to see, um, what those were for. I, I was thinking that one was for the month of August, one was for the month of July, but the two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars was a little, a little higher than one thousand. Okay, so, uh, Cam is saying that she had to make four trips a day, and that's why it was a lot higher for the month of August, but I will, um, put that in writing to you guys. And then the last question that I had was, um, there was a check cut for two thousand, four hundred dollars to Thomas Stacko, and he was a consultant that, um, Eric Reyes, I remember, used, um, for special education training. Is that correct? Okay. And so those are the questions that were came out of Finance Committee. Okay, so we will take all three of those together, Ms. Allen? All right? Okay, I need a motion to accept item, I'm gonna number them, T two, Bank Reconciliation Report, T three, General Fund Monthly Report, and T four, General Fund Checks Issued Over Yes, I need a motion. So moved.
I'll second.
Is that Norman?
Yes.
They're properly moved to second. Are there any questions? And a little bit about how we go through these items if you've never attended a board regular meeting. We have two meetings a month. We have a work session where these items are presented to us early in the month. We look through those, we get our questions answered, there's a lot of discussions, and as far as the Treasurer's Items, um, the Finance Committee has met, um, prior to this meeting, so a lot of the questions, a lot of the information has been pretty much combed through, so at this time, we accept a motion to accept these items and answer questions, if any, and then action will be taken. So, being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Denise Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes T two, T three, and T four. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have our Superintendent Items.
Assistant Superintendent's Item Six A, got a resolution to accept a check in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents from Life Touch to be deposited in Madison Park Principals' Fund.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam, Madam Chair, we missed just one, one Treasurer's, Treasurer's Report.
Okay, um, Treasurer's Report, Ms. Allen?
Sure.
You have O R C five seven oh five, four blunt purchase order certification, the then and now, for F Y eighteen?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Um, there, there is a then and now that I'm proposing in front of you, and it is, um, there were actually two, one in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, and that bill was for Warren County E S C, the other one was seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars to Vision Screenings Clouds Gaper, which was for vision screenings. Both of these, um, bills were, we, we got the bill before purchase order was put on, and so anything three thousand dollars or higher has to then be approved by the board.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to accept item T five, um, resolution to approve the O R C five seven oh five purchase order certification then and now for Warren County E S C and Clouds Gaper.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved to second. Are there any questions? Being none?
I, I do have just one. I just, I'm curious as to what the Warren County E S C Educational Services were for.
We have two students. There are two students that attended because of Dwyer County E S C was full, to special needs students.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
Now, next up, Superintendent Items.
All right, thank you. Number President, um, Superintendent's Item A, you had to check acceptance, uh, resolution to accept a check in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents from Life Touch to be deposited in Madison County's, Madison Park Principals' Fund. Checks in the amount of forty dollars, four hundred ninety-two, and four hundred and eighteen from Life Touch to be deposited in Early Learning Center. Principals of the county, so there are two things there.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept item S one as presented.
I'm, I'm sorry, how many have we accepted?
Just one. You want to go with one? Or you want to?
Yes, one.
Okay, we're gonna go with one, and that is the resolution to accept a check in the amount of three twenty-seven sixty from Life Touch to be deposited in Madison Park Principals' Fund, and checks in the amount of forty dollars, at four hundred?
Two.
Yeah, four hundred and ninety-two and four hundred and eighteen from Life, Life Touch to be deposited in the Early Learning Center Principals' Fund.
Right.
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been properly moved to second. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
Superintendent's Item Six B, Overnight Field Trip, a resolution authorizing Westbrook Village Elementary Fifth Grade Students to travel to Camp Kern for overnight field trip on September twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
I need a motion to accept item S B, resolution authorizing Westbrook Village Elementary Fifth Grade Students to travel to Camp, Camp Kern for an overnight field trip on September twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions?
I'm just glad to see we still take the students to camp.
Yeah, I, I think we've been doing that for a while.
Very long time.
Okay. That's a really good experience. Being none, Ms. Allen will you call the roll?
Yes. Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Myra Bolesman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
Superintendent's Item Six C, got a resolution to approve Madison Park and Westbrook Village Student Activity Accounts for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
I need a motion to accept Superintendent's Item C, resolution to approve Madison Park and Westbrook Village Student Activity Accounts for twenty eighteen, nineteen school year.
So moved.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bosman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes, motion passes.
Superintendent's item six D. A resolution to approve gifted services contract with Catapult at Mother Brunner School utilizing Powell auxiliary funds. Intervention special services contracted with Catapult at Mother Brunner School utilizing IDA funds. Instructional services and reading and math contracted with Catapult at Mother Brunner School utilizing Title I funds. Instructional services and reading and math contracted with Catapult at Shawna and Julian High School utilizing Title I funds. Instructional services and reading and math contracted with Catapult at St. Benedict, the Moore School utilizing Title I funds for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
I need a motion to accept superintendent item D, as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions?
Uh, Ms., Ms. Allen, if we, can we get a report on remaining Title I funds?
Yes, actu- actually, the report is in your financial packet, and I'll have to talk about that under my treasurer's comments if you'd like.
Thank you.
And just as a note to, uh, the community, we're pass through for Mother Brunner, so we pass through for their services.
Any other questions or comments? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Myra Bosman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes, motion passes.
Superintendent's item E, policy, uh, resolution to adopt the gifted policy twenty-four sixty-four that Mrs. Swims actually talked about earlier. Gifted education and identification.
I need a motion to accept item S eight, as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions?
Uh, just a point of statement, Madam Chair, I did have the opportunity to take a look at the policy once it was sent over.
Yeah.
Against what the policy was previously, um, and the policy committee is okay with the changes that have been made.
Another note is that, uh, since gifted indicator is one of the indicators on the report card, um, in attending the urban district, uh, school network, other districts, Cincinnati is one also, that expanded to look to see how they could capture more students into gifted, so, uh, we are in line with what other districts are doing to meet the mark.
Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes. Uh, Norman Scares?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Myra Bosman?
Yes.
Denise Moore?
Yes, motion passes.
All right, superintendent's item F. Got a resolution to approve a contract to travel police department for the services of a school resource officer in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars commencing August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and ending May twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I need a motion to accept superintendent item F, as presented?
So move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions? Being none? Absolutely. The board docs program that we're using, um, this is the second meeting that we've used it, and I think we were trained for about an hour and a half. Want to pry from that? What this will do is, this will allow, um, instant information for our community based on our board meetings. And our citizens, or anyone who's interested can actually go right to our, is it, right on our website, and they'll be able to see the, the information along the lines of the items that were on the agenda and how we voted. Okay, and it count, yes. I'm sorry, okay? Mr. Scares made the motion, and Ms. Bosman second.
And I did have one question, and this is just one, uh, resource officer for the district?
That's correct.
Not white person?
It's only one officer, correct.
Okay.
Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Norman Scares?
Yes.
Myra Bosman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, but superintendent's with, uh, item G, person intended. Item one. The recommended approval of falling certified individuals for one-year limited contract for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. These are again, these are individuals who will be utilized as district, um, substitutes. As you know, that should have a challenge and, and provide coverage within our classes. This is one way that we're trying to alleviate that concern. These individuals will also be utilized, so we have teachers, we're going to other teachers' classrooms, and these individuals will then cover class. If you, if you go to the building, it's not one of the challenges and concerns that comes up is teachers will want to go out and seal the teacher's classes, but we have no way to provide coverage for the class so they can actually go out to other classes. So these individuals will assist us, and be able to cover when teachers are absent, but also the days when teachers are present, we can then utilize these individuals so teachers can then go out and shadow the teachers. Item two. Recognition for approval of falling certified, certified in twenty-two E using the ASNID basis, again, this is a regular data date substitute here. Item B one, recognition for approval of falling disability retirement, person's name is there, effective May one, two thousand eighteen. Item two, item B two, recognition for approval of falling classified reservations, the names are there. Item B three, recognition for approval of falling classified enrollment for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. I'll call your attention to, to individuals there, uh, Brennan Nicky and Shelley Perret, who work in the district office currently right now. One challenge, one challenge will, how we have them classified is we cannot have staff members who can actually do what they're trained to work to space tricky baseball of the classifications. Uh, what this will cost the district about forty cents an hour per person, so even then, you can change it over with other employees of the district office without them having other classification. They can't have to do other duties because of the classification. Item B four. Recognition for the falling classified, wanting to be used as an ASNID basis for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Again, this involves twenty-first century staff, tutors, event staff, uh, interns, and I'll talk about the interns in a minute, second. But again, it's twenty-first century staff, recreation people after school health, and event staff.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept superintendent item G, as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions?
Yes ma'am. Uh, what is the difference between a twenty-first century staff tutor and an after-before-school tutor? I am.
Before?
Before. On that last page.
Twenty-first century, actually, fifteen thousand onward, and what's the other?
Uh, it's, it's, um, after slash before-school tutor.
That's the last P, the last P before-school program, no reminder, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So we have our, I do have one, so our interns are in, those are the, are those the students from Willberforce that we were talking about last time?
Yes, the interns are the students, we have a collaboration with Willberforce, and these individuals that are here are working with us. Our former force, there are three individuals, Casey Simpson works in operations and athletics with Marla Howard. You have Tibia Hilton, who works in after-school programs and parent engagement with Travan Leach and with Ella Isaacs. Then you have Jazz from Moss, who focuses bright middle academics and really looking, just a big systems look, how can they actually promote the school district?
How many hours are we allowing for them to work?
Up to twenty-five, up to twenty-five, and really is flexible with their schedules, they're not set day, 'cause some days they may, may be able to work six hours, another day they ain't coming at all, then they may come in on a Wednesday for two hours. So, but it's up to twenty-five hours, they won't, no one ever works twenty-five hours.
Are they here tonight?
They're here tonight, no, they're not, they're not here tonight, 'cause again, it's true, true, okay. They'll be the next quarter, I'm sure they'll be the next quarter, so let's really introduce them, let them tell all about themselves. I think they'll be impressed with the background, I'll make sure y'all get a copy of their resumes as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll?
Vanessa Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Myra Bosman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Norman Scares?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Next up, our discussion items and updates. First, the bookbag update.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, uh, I'm glad I could get any search on the bookbags. If we were to provide bookbags for every student in the district and ask them, okay, they have many new students that were anticipating coming in January, uh, the total cost is eighty-five thousand dollars. That's bookbags and equipment, that's all, everything for all these students, it's eighty-five thousand dollars. Have been pre-K through twelfth grade. Bookbags and all the supplies. Have been broken down by grade level and everything.
What are they charging us, um, per bag?
It depends, in fact, actually, the bookbags are different prices based on the grade level. And so the bookbags can come in different colors, they have different colors for different grade levels. They have low levels and as well, for new students. And again, like I said, the price of the bookbags vary from grade to grade based on how sturdy they are and what they can actually carry. These are really quality bags, they're provided, as well as all the supplies that go inside of these students. And we, how we came up with the supply list, we took our, our school supply list that we gave off during the senior year and had all of those, all of this stuff in the bookbags, when they came, then we drop ship to the building, and break the handouts, and he is not going to the district office, the one directed to their building.
I, I think it's a healthy little price there, but, um, I, I think the cost is a little healthy. Um, and we're into the year, a lot of parents have already spent money on bands, but I do think it's something we would definitely want to be in front of person, for me, for next year, so that parents get to keep that cost for next year. And, uh, they know upfront what we're providing. One of the other things, uh, we used to have planners for our students that had like, uh, different math facts. It, it was like a daily planner, um, and I know that at the elementary school, they have like a daily agenda, but one that's more, um, um, more informative and, and more business, like maybe for our middle and high school students. Uh, CTC had one, and it had a lot of, uh, math facts in the bag. And it would, it would just be a real quick reference for students as there's something to think about.
Do we know, um, just kind of off, off, off the top of your head, do you know what we spend on football uniforms and basketball uniforms and equipment?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't have that cost right now, but I have the information, so it's, it's important. There's, there's a cost to it, it's a cost.
I'm going to assume that it's probably more than eighty-five thousand dollars.
No, probably not.
This, this is just the way I see it, it is expensive, but that is quite an investment, um, on behalf of this board to our students and how serious we are about academic achievement. Um, I just feel like if we, if we can spend that type of money on our football program, then most certainly, we can easily spend that type of money on providing bookbags and notebooks and everything else for every single student in the district.
And, and Mr. Scares, let me be clear, it is not that, uh, first of all, as they say, I think it is a little costly, and maybe it is, but my bigger concern was that we're already into the year. We have most of our students, we might get some more in January. Parents have already expended money for bookbags. Uh, if there's other things that we need, uh, uh, and, uh, aside from the bookbags, but I think it would, if I was a parent, I'm a grandparent now, uh, going into next year, I know my student will have a bookbag, I don't have to expend that cost. And what I was also saying is, if we don't already have the planners for the students, so it is. I am on board with you in providing them, each and every student, everything they need to help them, uh, succeed. One of those things would be the planner that had those, uh, quick reference facts in the back that allowed them to track their day and what they have going on. So, we're on the same page.
Yes ma'am, let me apologize, 'cause I didn't hear the January piece, so I, I apologize for that. Uh, so maybe there is a way to supplement, if we do it in January versus first of the year for next year, um.
And, and given that, if we're gonna do the planner, it may be a little bit more than eighty-five thousand dollars. I mean, uh, based on what all that looks like, so, um, I was under the impression that we were gonna start, um, in the next school year. So, I don't know, um, again, I, I think it's a worthy, um, investment. Especially when, I know, I had four children in the district, and that was really, really expensive to have to buy all the school supplies, all the bookbags and everything else. So, um, it's definitely a commitment on the part of board to make sure that our students are getting what they need.
I have a comment to make, um, you know, I also have a child in the district now, I'm a schooler, and I just, um, was talking to Jeter Freeman, he wanted a phone, and I was not one of those parents who, he didn't have a phone. And so I let him have my hand-me-down phone. So he immediately got into the calendar, you know, so he put all of his band events in. He put all the information that he needs in, he spent most of Sunday trying to erase all of my stuff out of it to put his stuff in. So I wonder if, when we think about a planner, are we being a little short sighted when we consider our middle schoolers and high schoolers? And would they really use that, would that be a waste of, of our district funds? Secondly, as it relates to bookbags, the same child also told me that the backpack that I spent, I don't know, thirty dollars on, is too small. And that's something that may, perhaps, we didn't know or think about when I purchased the backpack. Also, the school supplies that I purchased are going to be gone in no time. And the school uniform I bought, they're already left. So I mean, I'm just saying, I say all that to say, they still need bookbags, they still will need school supplies in January. That stuff doesn't last forever, and if we buy a decent quality bookbag, um, it should last longer than one year. So no matter what, they still have the bookbag that their parents purchased this year, as well as a new bookbag that hopefully can last a little bit longer. So I don't know what the quality of that bookbag would be, Mr. Overston, but I would, you know, I would hope that it would be a nice quality bookbag that would last longer than just one school year.
Actually, I'm.
And size, I would consider size, 'cause as, as they're smaller, they need smaller, but the, the high schoolers and middle schoolers possibly, they need bigger bags.
Right, if I could, I could, I could, I could, I could ask them to the band, if they ask them to listen to some samples and some demos, and then let the students have a seat there, and give some feedback, let, uh, let them have some true test, assist the students.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Can we see what our, uh, we have, yeah, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we have two, two reps.
Planners or the bookbags or both?
Either, both.
Um, personally, I have a planner myself, and I put all my, like, events and stuff on paper, 'cause I like it better than my cell phone. But a lot of these high school students don't use planners, so I don't know how good of an investment that would be, 'cause every student is different. But personally, I use planner. Um, the bookbags, I do think that's a good investment, and school supplies does run out pretty fast, 'cause people just add the pencils and borrow pencils, and they go out quick. So I think the investment would be there in January.
Um, just one, one other question. Uh, we did make the commitment, you know, to, to make sure our, our teachers knew that they didn't have to come out of pocket for anything. Are they making their requests known? I mean, are they telling, are they making requests as to what they need?
My education that I have in the administration, my district leadership team, I'll say yes.
Any other comments? I think, um, superintendent, um, I, I agree with you, let's pull, let's vet it through the schools and see what the kids are, are, are want. Because I know at one time, Trotwood did give planners out. And, and it was, it was very helpful along the lines of keeping up with the information and things along those lines, because, I'm sorry.
Those planners like the ones we do from Johnson's or a real planner like that, I'm just trying to, just trying to.
That they were student planners.
Yes, these guys were ones from Johnson's, that's separate from the bookbag, that's a separate cost.
Okay.
Let me say this, when I'm throwing things out, it is for the discussion that we just had, and the good thing about our board, we have a, we have a parent of a middle school, and she's bought a bookbag, we have a student rep. So, I most certainly, my youngest has been ten years, so I defer, I defer to those that are here and purchasing and understand what the needs are. Those were my comments, they were, by no means, we needed to go and buy, it is exactly what you said, we need to have our student voices heard and for them to be a part of. And the other part you mentioned, Ms. Bolesman, is the size of the bookbag. So, those are important things, this was a good discussion.
Um, I'd like to add, um, the discussion's been very productive, I think, but, um, I kind of agree with, uh, Ms. Gina Freeman, and maybe not for the high school in light of, uh, uh, the things we learned, uh, sitting up here today about what the high school needs might be, but I think that, uh, planners might be effective at maybe some of the younger grades. I, I know, uh, it does help students get organized, it's a hands-on kind of thing that they can work with, and it's, they have, it's gonna be there, should be there every day, and they can write in and, and put all kinds of notes and, uh, different kinds of things, not just about, uh, not just about school assignments, where everything else is, is going off of them in school. And it might be useful for the younger grades to help them get organized, as opposed to, uh, to rely exclusively on the phone. And I could be wrong, that might help them a little more, maybe.
Yes.
I was gonna say, well, I've done my financial reports this, this week, I did see expenditures for planners, and I think it probably was the younger, younger grades and not, and that's for the high schools, but they have bought the planners for the younger.
Oh, wonderful.
What's with the massive part?
That's wonderful. Because again, if we're gonna prepare them for, for the future, I mean, you're still carrying around a planner, I know I'm carrying around a planner, it's good that they would be, we were not all, but anyway, um, it would just be a good opportunity to at least expose them to the planner. So, it's not like you get to college and it's like, what's that?
I have a question, Ms. Bolesman, does this, I have one at the middle school, does he have one to live, I have. I found the middle school.
Over the years, he's had one, but, I mean, he rarely used it unless his teachers or I forced him to, um, get it signed, you know, to ensure that he was doing his assignments, but for the most part, um, I think it may have got used maybe like second grade, third grade, and then, then on, I don't know that he really used it. They, there were a lot of empty pages in his planners unless I forced him to use it, you know, uh, when he wasn't doing his assignments or something. But, um, I was thinking about the back, the backpack, which I think are a great idea, but, um, as you sort of vetted through the schools, I'm also wondering about the cool factor, I mean, is it gonna be cool to have a RAM backpack, or are they not one of the RAM backpacks? You know, are they one of my? And so, right, so if we're gonna buy it, are they, is there a cool factor and are they gonna carry the backpack?
I can add with the student reps on this one.
We'll defer to the student reps.
Let me say, let me, let me give mine for, as a parent, you've been putting on that free bookbag. Okay?
What, what do you think, student rep? I mean, everybody's walking around with the chocolate look bag, with the big TM, and the ball red.
There are different colors, there are different colors for different grades too.
Okay.
There are different colors for different grade levels, like the students be red, Donald's juniors are obviously black, and then the freshman be gray.
I, I think that's really gonna be a good project to just really find out what students want.
Well, I would say that we do need to, um, us as a student body need to incorporate more, um, student spirit. However, I feel that most students wouldn't really, um, be in favor of that. That's just my opinion.
Would not be.
Right, high schoolers.
Did you say would not?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Somebody could grab their bookbag and it had their phone in it, and we might, as we talk through this.
Microphone, please.
Yeah. And that's exactly why we talked through this, alright, so, um.
Maybe, maybe.
We'll work with students, I think the students can actually, they at least enough to have a baseline, those are the costs. And that's a good start for us right now, so I can share with the board eighty-five thousand, we're looking at giving them a nice bookbag to get started. We can get you sample bookbags in, still work with the high school students, because of, you know, one of the things, of using the technology, we see planners for middle school high school students, that may be a older technology, where these students may be more apt to use phones or some type of, of, of a device versus a planner.
Any other comments on the bookbag? Alright, um, next item, behavior attendance grades, bag report.
Excellent, thank you. I'll start to pass on some charts here, while the charts have been passed on, I thought through some of the behavior things. Uh, what we're seeing, again, it's very popular news, uh, yes. If you look at the data, the out-of-school suspensions since seventeen eighteen, it's through the same period right now, there were a hundred suspensions, a hundred out-of-school suspensions. At this time, this year, there's only fifty-three. If you look at in-school suspensions for last year, there were a hundred and twenty-seven at this time, there are thirty. If you look at the number of days absent from school based on these infractions here, last year, three hundred and eighty-seven days, this year, a hundred and seventy-five. If you look at the number of incidents last year, this time, two hundred and twenty-nine, this year, eighty-nine. So I can share with you, there's a large, there's a great decrease in number of incidents, days out of school, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions. Uh, what we'll do now is we're gonna take, we'll do a deep dive into the grade levels, as well as the different schools, since there's a decrease from last year to this year. Uh, we'll share with you, I believe that mental health therapists, the social workers, and the other support that we're gonna place around those supports are making improvements, and what we can do on there. Uh, also, let me share with you, I think another part of this decreasing discipline time administration is our, our dealers who own the classrooms. Uh, as I shared with you last time, there was thirty, it was back through, uh, July, I'm sorry, through September eleventh, at that time, there was only thirty. Walk-throughs last year, this year, we had about eight hundred and fifty-five, but we'll need to update today as of nine twenty. Last year, there was sixty-eight classroom observations last year, at this time, by administrative team. This year, right now, there are one thousand two hundred and nine observations over there. So, I will share with you, I think that the administration's been in classrooms, uh, has assisted in all the teachers and grown in practice, also kind of put a check on students and some inappropriate behaviors they may have been having as well. And I look into, like, you know, the concerned community, you know, where the police sits, you still, you know, I do, like, equate to like a white Bronco van truck in, in trouble. You see a truck stolen, I think the same thing happens for us students as well. So, from the end standpoint, uh, people are doing a great job, but I will share with you, uh, visiting the different schools, and what it can keep coming up is more support uh, from a social standpoint, as well as mental health services. So, I've asked the teachers and administrators to document the need, so I can then bring it back to the board for additional support. Because again, there is a need, uh, from mental health supports, as well as social workers, and we knew that morning, but we started with a small number, because we didn't want to move over staff, but we wanted to run size the number of individuals.
Well, I can say that this is significant data, I mean, when you talk about sixty-eight walk-throughs the same period last year, and now it's twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred.
And the discipline report is, I mean, it's just almost unbelievable along the lines of the numbers, so, uh, this is good, this is good information.
Attendance, well, I'll, I'll email attendance out to the board from time to time, you may be on that list that gets attendance, right now, the ratio's over ninety-five percent. Other district, uh, I can tell the high school and middle school are over, right over ninety-three percent themselves right now. Uh, they have Westbrook and Martin Park hitting ninety-six, ninety-seven, most days. Uh, so, yeah, this is a, definitely a trend of what we seen last year, we did not make ninety-three percent for our district.
And, and that's important to understand, that we are tracking everything, we are tracking all the data. Uh, we're not gonna have to wait to find out what graduation rate is, and what attendance rates are, and what our grades are, because we're gonna already know based on what we're doing in the district. We've been very intentional and very proactive with that.
Uh, also, I said from the grade standpoint, we'll start, you see the report card, the sample report card?
Yes.
I have to deal with the one that kind of, we're, and there's a technology for this one thing, the one has one, one of assessments, and second, everything for is, there's a need for like a tech kind of person who can kind of make sure we bring it all these pieces together. So, I can ask the one, I'll show the mic now, the one, when, when you think we might better get these reports out, this report card, the bag report card?
What about it?
When do you think we can get those out? It may be starting pilot K five or K five first.
Hoping next week.
Maybe next week, next, you looking at what they get? By next Friday? Next Friday, and we have some data about later minutes as well, from the formless assessments, we have students attendance in there, we have students' behavior in there, as well as students' grades, it'll be in that data and that document, um, does everyone have it? Everyone have the report card, the sample report card? Yeah, so every kid, that, that kid, probably start with K five for those, and then we can send this home weekly.
Okay.
And this is really like a part of the goal of the warning system, it helps us understand which students are on track and which students are not on track, and then what kind of mentions and accommodation or modifications are needed to support the students who may have some challenges and their concerns.
Um, I sat in on the parent engagement meeting tonight, and they were doing the progress books and actually, uh, showing parents how to access their student data. And basically, it was the report. Yeah, and for those, uh, parents who maybe don't have access to internet, or, uh, might be technologically challenged or what have you, it was so great that we have the hard copies of weekly reports, so either way, parents are gonna know where their kids are along the lines of, uh, I, I like the discipline referrals left on here, not only the weekly attendance, but, I mean, we are really tracking everything.
Also, I share, you know, I want her team to put together the progress book, uh, and the library will run out, uh, as the parents access codes as well. Students have it on access code, parents have one, and the one and her team put together, put together that information. Do you wanna let know, uh, what they've been held out?
Uh, most of, some of them were run out last week, the rest of them are going out this week with intern, interim.
With that, yes.
And then today, the parents who came, we tried to print a couple to give to them, and they had not received them in the mail yet, but a couple of parents had already had received them.
And so, I want to bring our team, who, who does, their parents along, they're giving them right now, these are new systems and structures and supports are put in place to support our students, support our teachers, and support our parents.
Thank you, Donal. And you too. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip C since they're not here, um, but we can talk about the, uh, board retreat. We have a retreat coming up next week, um, and you, you guys will have an agenda out along the lines of what we will actually be discussing. Uh, if there's anything that you want specifically, let's make sure that, um, you let me know, and we'll put it on the agenda. And that retreat is the twenty-seventh, from four until probably at eight o'clock in the evening. We've got, uh, quite a bit of things that we need to cover. Next, we are gonna have Youngstown City Schools, they're having a retreat, and they had actually invited us to come to the retreat and speak with them about school turnaround, and what we did differently along the lines of being in that, uh, awkward position of not making the grade and possibly being at risk of a state takeover. Their original date is like October ninth, which is a Tuesday, middle of the week or Wednesday, and, um, we've talked at length about being able to support Youngstown, however, we're gonna do a Skype, an actual Skype meeting with their board um, to really share best practices and also see how we can help, because again, it's really all about the learning and it's all about students. Yes?
When is that, the sparring?
I'm sorry, the Skype meeting? It is October ninth, is that right?
Super different.
October ninth, six P M, six is, the map, six to seven P M.
Yes. And we've done Skypes before, so we're getting pretty good at it. This particular, this particular Skype meeting is gonna be in the superintendent's conference room, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Next up, Trotwood Community Parade is coming up, and I believe that, um, all the documentation's in along the lines of the school district?
I believe so, emails have been coming out from the, probably from the city, uh, to different areas, letting them know what time they need to be at the parade, and, uh, also the line.
Okay. In addition to that, I know for last year, we were in the parade, and we were in cars. Um, some of us were in cars, not all of us, right, Mr. Scares? However, um, we can walk, we can be in cars, we just probably need to decide on how we want to, to go about participating in the parade, so that we can let the city know. Cause it was interesting how we had to line up last year, you remember, Ms. Bolesman, so, we just wanna make sure that we make it real easy for them, no matter what we decide to do. Um, last item, Twenty-First Century Grant. Um, maybe an update on that, because I know there was an email that went out along the lines of some, um, I think it was the elementary schools and ELC being, uh, postponed?
Correct.
Okay.
I can actually have Trevan, Trevan Leach to kind of talk about the Twenty-First Century Program, what's called Twenty-First Century, where we are at the program, after school program.
I wanna drop the mic. Alright, good evening. Okay, um, Twenty-First Century again, uh, actually, the letter that was sent out, uh, the program would be actually started on October eighth. What happened was, I, I really tried to get it out a little earlier than it was last year. Uh, we tried to partner with the Y M T A, they couldn't actually cover the things that we needed to be covered, so we had to change and partner with some of the folks.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say you had to change?
Yes, they could not accommodate, uh, they could not meet the requirements for the program for us.
Who, who are we partnering with now?
Right now, we're probably with the library, Metro Library. Would be one of them.
And they'll be able to make the deadline?
Yes, there, there won't be a problem with that, as a matter of fact, last year, we actually started, I believe, October ninth. We still have up until the fifteenth, but we'll, we'll be ready for that.
What services are they providing, the library?
Now, Ms. Ms. Ella Isaac and Ms. Tasha Johnson actually have those details, I was prepared tonight to give you all those details, to be totally honest.
They were partners as well, actually, so I guess if you can ask, for those who are part of Twenty-First Century Grant last year, when the library was there, it should probably be very similar to that, whether, whether services were provided, unless there were services were provided, and Steve had the least optimism in the eyes, was in charge of bringing these all to the party of Twenty-First Century, these may just be coming out, but what services the library provided, is.
Yeah, um, last year, the library, they, they are actually the nonprofit partner on the grant, and they provided weekly literacy activities for each site. So, they would travel around to all three sites, they would bring collections of books for the students to check out on their library cards, so they helped with their reading. And they also did STEM activities, uh, readers theater, all kinds of engaging enrichment activities around literacy. So, they did that for every site, every week.
I have another question, so I just wanna make sure I'm just being, so, what?
So what, what made us go back to the Y? We were with the library last year, pardon me?
Well, we wanted to also give everyone an opportunity to kinda support. Maybe new year, we wanted to actually, they reach out to us and say that they wanted to have the opportunity to try. So again, being in the community, we wanted to give them an opportunity.
Cause I used to be the board chair for the Y and they couldn't support this back when we got this going years ago. They never, they never had the manpower to support it. So I was just curious as to, I don't know, maybe the history of that was lost or because they don't, they have even less support now.
And again, I'm doing a block and I didn't, you know, I wasn't sure to pass, but at the same time, we still wanted to see if they, you know, if they recovered. Again, I'm sure they were aware of that, I believe, but I wasn't aware of that also, B U. So it was, they came and they approached me and wanted to see what they had.
That was, that was Jordan and I, that's our friends as well, I need to, my friends to kinda share. But I wanna share, I know we met with Sean and so, and Paul, Howard, David, Sean Tucker, who was at the Y M T A. And we talked, you know, again, and thinking about sustainability of a community and trying to maintain programs. We're trying to give an opportunity at that time, we thought we could be able to get people to come in. We talked about him recruiting parents to be part of this, asking them to reach out to the P B football leagues or the baseball groups and other groups and try to pull parents in and go again. That was the whole time I was out for the summer. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars may not be a lot for some families, but for other families, we keep pulling the table. They keep some gas in cars. And that's where we're trying to go, we're trying to recruit parents. Also looking at trying to recruit some students to actually do some work as well. And keeping the money within all the meaning, so we're trying that way. We cannot, we employ the students pretty much, but the Y M T A act was a third-party vendor and even for them to employ students and parents and things like that.
I guess, I guess my concern, question would be is really around the date that we told parents that this program would be available. And it's not available when the parents expected it to be. And so I guess my question would be is how soon did we know that the Y could not provide the service? Cause they're not tutoring, right? They're, they're offering enrichment activities, correct?
It would, it would, it would be as well as the online slot. That's what they've been talking, they still, they're right, they still wanna be on the fly. Our concern is the Y, we can give them on the fly when they can come from the other purpose.
Yeah, it's a piecemeal, I mean, we don't wanna piecemeal because then we have to deal with two entities opposed to one.
Right, but the Y hadn't been here since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. They weren't here last year and they really couldn't support it before, so why would we even entertain?
Because again, at that time, yeah, I think there was a lot of community politics at play. And I think, me being new here, my thing is this is the online slot organization and it will break into the grant. We're gonna utilize the individuals in the grant and that, we just, I read about P B football teams this year and giving access to our equipment because of the main things in the grant that get out of here to ourselves. So by providing opportunities based on what the grant said, we really, they can't come up with a grant that would call. If we, if we exchanged the grant, and I'm not sure if we could have went back because it was so late when I was here. I'm not sure if we could change the grant and made revisions to the grant. I haven't talked the least about some academic things, but we're really concerned that we, that we lose that grant all of that. They don't have to be funded by the school district, which would be fine, fine by me either way. But it would be three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars the district would have to pay up versus the state providing those dollars to run a program. Something's three hundred eighty-seven.
So.
Three, sorry, three hundred seventy-nine dollars.
But how, how soon, how soon did we know that they couldn't do that?
Again, it would be by the definition.
That was only maybe, almost like about a week ago. So once we started that, we definitely, we started being aggressive, we started hiring, trying to hire folks and all those things.
Good evening. We actually started conversation with the Y back in late May, early June about them doing the entire program, staffing all the activities. We found out on Friday or Monday that they would not be able to automate that agreement. I take that back, it was Thursday because I began to do interviews. I went through HR, got the applications, and I began to interview, call people in to staff. Since that time, I've contacted Ohio State University's SNA program, Forest Sports, Darren Bell. We received an email from Mr. Tucker on Tuesday stating that they would still be willing to do the Y and the flight, the physical activity portion of it. Trotwood Ranch, David Metro Library is also on board. I have a meeting tomorrow with the University of Dayton's Family Engagement Council and I've been reaching out to additional partners at that meeting to see if there are other entities that can support the activity portion for the program. As far as the date, as I stated, we were slated to start on September twenty-fourth. As you know, we started last key on September tenth and the goal was to start the before and after school touring program on the twenty-fourth and then we were faced with the idea of staff and then handling all the components of the program. So that is the reason why we're here.
Okay, and again, I just wanna make sure that I'm, that I'm clear. Cause we had discussed staffing issues regarding the before and after care program before because the people or teachers or retired teachers that we used last year were complaining about the, the new wage, correct?
That's correct.
So we knew ahead of time that there was going to be staffing concerns or issues with this particular grant or this particular program only to suggest that we're late because the Y couldn't facilitate the program. But we were looking at hiring the staff for the program anyway.
I think we're looking at a much smaller scope.
And also the Y?
Trevane, I think you're looking at a much smaller scope right now as well. Because the scope we're looking at right now, we're bringing in students also who work for university, they're part of this. They'll be working at the school program as well as others. Again, I went back to Trevane, Ella, and others when I had a meeting last week and I say, guys, don't forget the initial call was to go out to these parents and get parents involved in after school program. I said, also, don't forget, we talked about hiring students to be a part of after school program. I said, I'm not sure if we lost that, but that was part of the call that I made to the individual. I said, I still want that to happen. The Y is sure is that they were gonna go after the parents through the different organizations in town. They're sure is that they were gonna actually hire students as well. So they actually had a plan in place to actually hire individuals. The teachers that we're talking about that were actually hiring last year, again, I told you many things in the grants that we actually were not hearing to. We have retired teachers who are not a part of, a part of the unit, we're paying them bargaining wages, which was, I shouldn't say is they're late, but it was on that floor on our behalf. We should be paying them a non-teacher wage. We have teachers out here in the audience right now, again, that's their wage because they're part of the bargaining unit.
I guess part of it is, I guess we have, we have so many of these people, because even Sean is new to this position as exec. You know, so he, he's not really sure how the program worked before, the problems that we had before, how we couldn't hire people before, how, you know, even I was like doing stuff to help the Twenty-First Century Grant because we couldn't find people to do it. So I guess he didn't have that history and he kinda thought he could do it and he, I mean, all of us, I guess, fought into it, but they had never been able to support their program. And it's really hard for them to even staff the Y, you know, let alone reach out and do anything for the grant. I mean, I remember even I had my cousin helping. I mean, we were all, that's the kinda thing it was because they just couldn't support it. They just couldn't support it.
I think lessons learned in, in situations and in partnerships, there needs to be ongoing communication and conversations, weekly, where are we, benchmarks?
This is a great, it's a great experience for all of us.
Yes.
They don't go back to my mission call, they're going back to the P B days and to these parents. They go out to these parents and get our parents involved. That's what we said initially, we wanted to get our parents involved. I think there is still, I'm missing the following, we're trying to ask all those other people to do it. We're missing a great resource, our parents and our students. So there may be a great push in the pool going on the next, what, next couple of days and really, social media wise, trying to keep parents thinking about these programs. Again, there's a great need for parents to earn an income in this community. It's not a lot, but it's something, you know, a supplement what they're gonna get right now.
So what would the hours, what would the hours be for the parents? Because this would be before school, I know at Madison Park and after school. So before school is two hours, after school?
Actually, I think it's three until six-thirty during training.
Actually, the morning starts at seven fifteen, eight forty-five, which is hour and a half. And then in the evening, they actually start at three to five thirty. And of course, it starts in ten-minute increments because of each building, the three buildings. So it's two and a half hours in the, the afternoon.
Yeah, so that probably makes it difficult to hire someone, even parents, because parents are working and those hours are the hours that they're working. So I guess this one we need to, and I'm sure you will, put the focus on and map out exactly what we need to do.
We'll, we'll do that.
Right, so we'll, we'll regroup here and we'll make sure we have a quality program with quality staffing in place going forward.
And we also have, and we did, and we also have some, as you said earlier, students from Global Force as well as Central State, and they're looking at you being somebody else's resources as well.
We'll provide also feedback from, at the next quarter. We'll have feedback about the program, who we hire, where we find these interviews at, because I think, cause we are part of the grants. It's way too complicated, but we don't have the capacity ourselves, then we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. So we have to definitely look at what we're doing with here. I think, I think there's another resource that we're missing out on. And I think this is a conversation we have, yeah, in one of the meetings, talking about, there's another resource in the grant that we have not addressed.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So we have till October fifteenth, is that correct? Superintendent, along with?
October, oh, the, October eighth, Trevane?
October eighth.
October eighth.
And then again, the program will start October eighth, so.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I was reading through this and we're planning to start October the eighth. All of the necessary requirements that the staff has to, that has to have in order to participate or at least be employed through this grant will be done by the eighth?
Yes.
Well, before the eighth.
It has to be done before the eighth.
In the next.
So how long does that take?
Well, they have a training setup, orientation training, which will be in, in our district as well as any other certificates of fingerprinting to make sure they have it. Other than that is the inspection that we have from the state.
So a good friend of mine facilitates the Twenty-First Century Program from the Omega CDC and we were just kinda chit, chit chatting today. And today is the twentieth and that is cutting extremely close. And we can guarantee, I mean, and here's my passion, because I don't know about some of the staff members or if the community comes and knocks on your door because they were expecting the program to start on Monday because now they have to find someplace where their kids to go. And they won't answer, so forgive me if I seem a little bit passionate about it, but they don't knock on your door, they knock, they come and knock on my door. I just wanna make sure that we, if, if they know, have, have the parents been contacted again about the new start date?
Yes, they have by email and by.
And I think the parent gave us also a call, the parents as well from schools that have it, so.
Yes, we already did communicate that with them.
And just to play devil's advocate for a second, what would happen if the program doesn't start by the eighth?
Yeah, the district ministry is asking about those programs.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing you say, the program will start?
On October.
On October eighth, okay. Thank you. Okay, we are down to the student representative comments. Ms. Holloway?
To start off, I was just asking or suggesting, can we do more own calls to like parents and students instead of the letters or additional to the letters? Because on Wednesday, there was a senior parent meeting and a lot of people, they get their interns with the letter saying their meeting was Wednesday, so a lot of us didn't get to attend, including me, cause I didn't know about the meeting cause my forms didn't come in the mail. So I was thinking, could we try to do additionally, like more own calls to let people know about upcoming events? Also, I wanted to suggest or see if we could look into doing more college fairs how we had previously this past, Friday, yeah, the fourteenth. Because it was a great experience for the seniors. A lot of people were accepted to college, to schools and given scholarships. Personally, I was accepted to sis schools, six schools, and awarded three scholarships, including a full ride. So, thank you. So I was just wondering, could we look into doing more things like that because it's a good experience for students? That's all.
Also? I had a couple of questions for the board. My first one is centered around the superintendent's report and the student activity accounts, purpose statements and budgets. On page twenty-four, at the bottom, it states, any remaining funds in the activity account may be used at the discretion of the principal. So I was just curious, do remaining funds automatically go to school needs just to the principal's liking? Or do they not? And just overall, is there someone monitoring the use of remaining funds used by the principal at his or her discretion?
Okay.
If you need a microphone, can you? Can you hear? It was.
Okay. Yes. I think I heard her ask about remaining funds and any to her student activity account, was that the question?
Yes, ma'am, I was just curious, because it says that the remaining funds will be used at the discretion of the principal. So I was just curious, do they automatically go to school needs just to the principal's liking or no? And overall, is there someone monitoring the use of these remaining funds being spent?
So if there's a remaining fund, they usually stay in that particular fund until the next year. Particularly the balance for like your seniors, they will say, I would like to donate their remaining funds to incoming class. So we have moved funds in that respect. The majority of the budgets of remaining funds stay in that particular activity account.
Okay, thank you.
So did you have a question on a specific one more that I didn't really research for you?
Um, not at the moment, just in general, thank you. And then my second question.
Another question is just about money sitting in accounts. Can you say the one account that we went to move money from? I thought there was a whole account in like two thousand nine that was supposed to move money from. I thought I heard that, my question was, okay, it's the whole student account, like two thousand nine, but I don't know where to move the money to.
I was just thinking, research that, and I could come back with a recommendation on those funds.
Another question you asked about when we spend money, are we really looking at how we spend our money to support students? Is that correct?
It was just in general. This is far, I don't, it was just in general. This is far, is, is it being monitored or is it just all, we trust you to do this or you do this type of situation?
Excellent question.
So she's asking if it's being monitored.
Right, right. The money being on the.
And then my second question to the board was, was the board ready to give back with seniors as far as graduation requirements and why the senior capstone is so heavily weighted whether we graduate or not? It is only one point towards our eighteen points in order to graduate.
Actually, I've been with the state and based on the, where we are, we cannot use it. Actually, for one point of graduation, it's a revision being made. As far as the weight goes, I am meeting with you all senior teacher on next Tuesday with the principal and the director of curriculum to discuss.
So will it not be used as a noun for our eighteen points or twelve? Okay.
I like if you, if I may. Oh, sorry, go right ahead, Trevane. I would like to again say about the monitoring of the accounts. For the student activity accounts, there's usually an advisor that is responsible for managing or helping the students to manage that particular account. And so there is monitoring on that. Every year, we look at the particular accounts, what the balances are. And if there's a negative balance, obviously, I gotta reach out to that particular advisor to ask what their plans are in terms of activities. So there is some monitoring of those particular accounts. But if you have anything real specific, just let me know and I can research that for you. But I will look at those old accounts and Mr. Overston said two thousand nine, so I need to look at that as well. Good question. Good question. Thank you. Um, how about treasurer's comments?
I, I actually, um, had, just a statement, how does this comment? Uh, I let the finance committee members know this evening that we did have a payroll breach on our payroll checking account. There were two checks that were actually forged in the amount of twenty-three hundred dollars, same person, same amount. The check looked exactly like our payroll checks, someone just copied the check, erased the name, and put someone else's name. Uh, we have very strict internal financial controls, so PNC Ben did call and let us know that there had been a breach on our account. We were able then to stop that check, and I guess I wanted my board to know that, but in addition, just FYI for everyone in our listening audience, to make sure that you also are monitoring your financial, um, accounts, because this era that we are in is, is just off the chain. I mean, anyone can take your information and make it their own. And so, like I said, our, our, um, internal controls, we have things in place to catch those, those. The check was outside of the range that we actually, um, issued, so we actually, when we do checks, we upload it to the bank, so the bank knows exactly the checks that we issued, but this is outside of the checks also, so that's also what we call. So I just want you all to, to know what happened the last couple of days.
Thank you.
And that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent comments?
Yeah, just a few things to talk about. Um, I'll be working with the TMB president, Mrs. Bruno, and a couple of individuals from our central office in regards to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar. So we'll be working on it next week. As you know, I've got two meetings on the calendar as well, before we actually come official, so I'll work quickly, Mrs. Bruno, and the teachers, trying to have a calendar to you by the end of October, so we can actually do some, make some really new things, um, January to the second half of the school year. Uh, preschool. For nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar. Preschool, just want to get an update on preschool, and all of the full-time, uh, slides for full, we still have fourteen open slides in the half-day program, so I think, and sharing, you know, talking to Mr. Scars, for whom it's scarce, I think there is a, I think the data says what we've been saying anyway, I think the parents are looking for full-time, uh, preschool, and I would maybe propose to the board to offer more full days, preschool programs for the nineteen, twenty school year. Uh, and working with Mr. Howard, and about where we look, uh, we will have a segment of interviews who may not want full days, so where do you then house those half-day students, uh, who may want this half-day preschool? Uh, working with the city of Trotwood and Chief Wilson, in regards to the kindergarten court, uh, this program will be used to assist our students who may have some practices, uh, in not having, they may transfer out of town. The dinner court, which is mainly kind of court we hear in Trotwood, and they will also then use a lot of these sort of practices uh, toward, uh, rehabilitation in our, in our community. Now looking to try to have a kindergarten before program running by January twenty nineteen. And that's, the holdup is, uh, right now, the city is working with their legal team, and the court system trying to work out the legal issues there. And, uh, we're working with, uh, four members, Scars and Bozeman, uh, nobody's sixteen, we're working on the O, and we're looking at a lot of the policies that have come in. There were about six instances of the policy that came in, I'll, I'll copy those to the board groups, and we'll make sure we start working through those policies to get our policies updated. Uh, I talked about the walk-throughs, really, the administrators, great job too. Uh, Lisa, uh, her, her, her team are working, and making sure that we have everyone really engaged and learned well in the district. And last year's different scholars, saying, you know, again, we've raised, uh, raised one of our students last week, different scholars. Uh, there were so many students that had money, prompted different scholars' program, and just want to say, you know, the great, uh, all the students that outstanding job, we came over and seen some students, I talked to some students as well, and this seemed to be a, was a great, uh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, board comments. Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, I have, um, just a couple of things. Um, one, I was, uh, able to, uh, attend the, uh, college fair last week, and it was very impressive to see the number of universities that were represented there, that came from several different parts of the country, the east, the west, uh, Midwest rather, and the south, and there were a number of HBCUs there. I, I was really impressed with the students that I talked with, pretty much everyone had a really, uh, good idea of what they wanted to do and what they wanted to pursue in terms of, uh, post-high school, uh, uh, goals. And so it was a really good experience to, uh, see them walking around and getting some really good information, and being able to actually see, uh, representatives from a lot of schools, and even some that maybe they hadn't initially considered, that would make available to them. Uh, there was, uh, uh, someone did mention to me a concern that maybe the seniors didn't have quite enough time to get around, to, uh, see everyone, and maybe spend as much time as, as they would have liked to. I don't know if, uh, that's something we really need to, uh, pinpoint and, and work on, but it was a concern that came to them. And, uh, someone also suggested it would be nice if, maybe, if we, if, if the opportunity presents itself, if we have, uh, graduates who are currently enrolled, or have graduated from a university that is being, uh, represented at the, uh, college fair, maybe they could come back and also give the students some additional insight on their personal experiences with the school. And it also kind of put me in mind to think about, uh, students who are not necessarily interested in pursuing a college career, and I'm wondering if maybe we could do something very similar with the skilled trades and things like that. Um, in a position I'm currently working with, there, it's been very nice to see a number of contractors that are at the base, that are former Trotwood students, and they are doing very well. Some of them are in, uh, uh, they're, they're working as electricians, uh, we have carpenters, we have, uh, metalworkers and things like that, and I know there's a high demand for those kinds of jobs right now, and not enough people filling them, and I'm sure that a lot of our students would be interested in knowing some of that. But overall, I thought it was, it was really, uh, a very nice affair, and I'm glad I was able to attend. The other thing I wanted to do was recognize, uh, Mr. Williamson and his guests, they've sat very patiently, and I, I need to see him after we, uh, uh, before we break into executive session, and, uh, uh, speak to him a little bit, but he wants to, uh, start a developmental, uh, program, and, uh, uh, well, a development program for baseball, to start with the young youngsters, and get them kind of involved in it, and maybe see them, uh, grow up through the ranks, and, uh, that could help us in the long run, in those sports that we're sometimes criticized for not being competitive in. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Um, Ms. Bozeman?
Well, I know, I'm just reading the agenda, okay? Yeah, I was really impressed with the college fair as well, and I think I smiled and talked about it all weekend, because I was so impressed with how happy the students were when they got accepted on the spot, and they got the scholarships. But, Mr. Andrews, I have to also echo your, um, point about the skilled trades fair, because I also overheard students saying that they wished they had something like that, because those particular students were not interested in going to college, they wanted to pursue something like carpentry or another type of skilled, skilled trade, so I think that would be something great for us to look into. And then I also sent, forwarded an email on to, uh, Ms. Moore and Mr. Overston from, um, a classmate of mine, who, um, connected me with a man by the name of Jim Clemmons, he just had a celebrity golf classic, he's a former athlete, and he's gonna, um, be having, he's putting together dates now for his basketball and life skills camp, and he wanted to, of course, see if Trotwood would be interested in participating in that, since he's now getting, um, his dates and such together, so I did forward that on, and I'm guessing that would get forwarded on to maybe Ms. Johnson or something, um, like that, just to look at and decide that would be something that perhaps Trotwood might want to participate in. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Scars says we're down there on that end, okay?
Um, not to steal anybody's thunder, but I think I am, um, in order to say, in, in light of the, uh, the score that we got, the grade that we got, thank God, thank God, that that worked out in our favor. And it is definitely a testimony, or a testament to how hard the staff is working. Um, so just thank you, thank you, thank you, because we could have been one of those on the news, but God saw fit to make it go another way. All right. Um, I did have, uh, a concern, I was driving down Union, uh, bringing my daughter to school one day, and I just thought about it. Uh, is there any possible way that there are any partnership opportunities for the city and the schools to maybe put sidewalks, because the kids walk down, they walk down Union and Shiloh Springs, and there are no sidewalks there, and they either have to, you know, walk in the grass, or, uh, walk right along the, the, the street there. Um, I don't know if there's any type of community improvement grants that's available, uh, just maybe I was, kind of had that on my mind. Uh, but, uh, with that, I, I did not have any other comments, but just thank you to the staff, and to our superintendent, and to this board, uh, who, who made what we got the other day happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scars. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Thank you all for coming out here tonight, and our students, our student representative, I am so proud of you. I mean, you all are little managers, I'm sorry, not little managers, but you are managers, young entrepreneurs, whatever you want to be, and you represent your class so well, so thank you. And Mr. Scars, on the sidewalk issue, years ago, after we built the schools, it was my understanding from our then superintendent, the district, uh, provided the sidewalk part of the way, and I, it was my understanding that the city was supposed to provide sidewalks, and maybe, uh, that never, you know, worked out, because there wasn't enough cooperation, but we have that now, and so I'm sure we'll, we'll look at it. And the other thing is, I sit on CTC's, uh, school board, we meet once a month on Tuesdays, I'm also the vice president there, but, um, so at our lunch, uh, myself and the president meet with the superintendent once a month before the meeting, and he mentioned that, um, he was gonna have two students, one from Trotwood, to come and speak to us at our board meeting. He had, uh, Justin Stevens and Jakarian, I might have pronounced his name wrong, I agree. They're in the computer networking program, they spoke so well, I mean, they represented us so well. And, uh, Justin, I believe, also, he plays football as well, so he was saying why he got into, uh, computer networking, he's like, "I don't really want to hack anything, but I've always been curious," and he said, "I have a three-point-five GPA," and the principal for his, uh, computer lab said, "He is getting so many calls that we actually have to block them now, because he is so sought after." So the one thing they were having him do too is increase his speaking ability, that's one of the reasons he was speaking before the board, because they understand that he will be out and speaking, they're wanting to do interviews, he's going to colleges. And, uh, Jakarian also said, so I asked, "How do you balance that? You're at Trotwood, and then you're playing sports, and then you're over here," and, um, they said, "For the sports, their, um, their coach, they don't play, it's like, it's the grades first. We have an academic table, uh, actors' school, and that if your grade, they do the weekly, and I guess it's the back report." Because they mentioned, the coaches get a weekly report of their grades, if their grades aren't right, they don't play. And if you could have seen the look on all of those faces of the other board member, and so they got high accolades from just about every board member sitting there, and a lot of them came up to me afterward and said, "They represented so well." So to our coaches, um, the program that they put in, the students was able to share what a quality academic, uh, athletic program we have in Trotwood. So that's what I say, beyond our zip code, and that's what they did. They represented Trotwood beyond our zip code to those other seventeen school board members at West Carrollton, Van Dyl, and Northmont that were sitting there. And so to, uh, Coach Graham and the other coaches, and to those two young men, uh, excellent job. And it was right after the grade, there were report cards, so it was like the ceiling back, and that's all I have.
That's a lot, that's great. That is great, that is great. Uh, we, we've had a lot of just amazing things happening here at Trotwood. We have so many things happening at Trotwood, I, I, I can't even keep up. Um, good example, even tonight, there was a Title One meeting at Madison Park, uh, there was stu- a parent engagement meeting at the board office, we're having this board meeting, I think, uh, was it last night, night before, there was a town hall?
Yes.
I mean, there is so much activity going on, but again, it goes to our point with being transparent and communication. We just want to make sure that our community, our parents, our students, our staff, everybody understands what it is that we are doing in this district, because it's for the good of the order, and it's for the good of all, along the lines of where we're headed. Um, I just really want to reiterate the, um, Infinite Scholars, that was an amazing, um, event. They, it wasn't a college fair, it was a money fair. Kids were getting, um, on-the-spot admissions, they were getting scholarship dollars. Again, that's really what we're about, we're really about supporting our students any way that we can. And finally, I'm just gonna say this, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, staff, thank you, parents, thank you, students, uh, community, superintendent, cabinet, thank you, board. Guys, I am telling you, we, where we were and where we're headed is miles apart. The fact that we got over the bubble, and I say that with a D, now, let me tell you, it, 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 it's no surprise that a D is not who we are, okay? And it's not something that we're hanging our hat on, but it was enough to get us out of the academic takeover, state takeover. And with that said, um, I know with the plans that we have in place, the strategic goals, the strategic plan that the superintendent and the cabinet are gonna be implementing, I am so excited about where we are going to be next year. Um, again, I can't say thank you enough for just the leadership on this board and what you guys have done to make, to really, really support all the initiatives in the district and make this happen, and it truly does take a village. And I'll tell you, uh, Ms. Jeter Freeman said that the students went beyond the zip code. Trotwood has gone beyond the zip code. I got calls from Senator Beagle, the state, House, uh, representatives, um, Columbus, ODE. Um, we're talking about all around the state, other boards, other superintendents, um, they are really, really, um, impressed by what we've done and the work that we've put in. And again, this is just the beginning, we are, we have not even started. Now the real work is going to begin, because we get an opportunity to educate kids, we get to be all about the learning, so I just want to say thank you, and thank you, God, thank you. And again, um, we are now going to adjourn into executive session, and I will need, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Um, there were two, I don't think, um, two events that we needed to.
Yes, um, that is the Black Elected Officials event, is that correct?
And also the Southwest Fall Conference that you asked me about, so I just thought.
Yes, um, what we have, and I, I share with the board along the lines of the Black Elected Officials banquet, this is something that we participate in, um, because it gives us. This is something that we participate in, um, because it gives us a wonderful opportunity to network. We've brought back some really good partnerships when we go to those type of events. Um, and I know you've had the tickets, so I'll make sure that the board gets the tickets. Uh, in addition to that, we have the Southwest, uh, Fall Conference coming up, October eleventh. Is that right? And we're gonna be recognized. Is that right? Um, on two accounts.
So the Southwest region, um, takes care and they like to represent their best and brightest. Being on a, being a part of the student achievement leadership team that's, uh, committed through the state, one of the things that we have to do is to make sure that our district have participants at the OSBA, uh, Fall, the OSBA conference. So for the last three years, I think, we've always had, uh, student groups to go up. Uh, Westbrook and Madison Park, I believe, went out. So the regional director, Ron Diver, uh, sent a letter to recognize them. So, Mr. Overston, uh, give yourself the principals and then whatever board members can attend, uh, on October eleventh. It will be at MBCTC and they will recognize them and provide a plaque.
And that is from five to eight-thirty. So I'll get you the, I'll get you the confirmations on who will attend and, uh, because I know that they need that for the dinner. It will go from there. October eleventh, um, Miami Valley CTC from five to eight-thirty.
Okay. And I was just gonna let him know that we probably just need our own table.
Yeah, uh, how many seats are at a table? Like eight or ten? Because we would, yeah. Ms. Allen, let's just go ahead and get a table, okay? And that way we can make sure that there's support there. And we also have a table at the Black Elected Officials event. Um, with that said, I need a motion to move into executive session for the purposes, uh, under the Board of Education Policy one zero six six to consider the employment of a public employee.
So move.
I'll second.
Ms. Allen, it's been properly moved and second. Are there any questions? No action will be taken. Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes, you're on with Scarris?
Yes.
Marla Bozeman?
Yes.
Michael Andrews?
Yes.
And Nessa Jue Freeman?
Yes.
And Denise Moore?
Yes, we will now turn into executive session. Yes.